We'll call this meeting to order at 6:30, this regular council meeting. And the town of Smithers acknowledges the Gettymden Clan and Wtsotin people on whose traditional territory we live, work, and play. And the public is notified the meeting is being recorded in webcast, a notice of which is on the bulletin board outside these chambers. Council, you have an agenda, including a supplemental and one change. So with consent, we're going to remove 15-1 and accept the supplemental as 19-1. And if folks are okay with that, I'll take a mover, councillor Patterson and councillor Buchanan. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. First up on the agenda, we have a delegation. So welcome. Please come to the delegation table. And we're happy to have you here for an update. And I'll just invite you to please introduce yourselves. And we'll enjoy the presentation. Then there'll be an opportunity for council to ask you some questions if there are any. And over to you.
I'm Alan Kindred. I'm with WSP Canada Inc. here in Smithers. I'm the engineer of record for the Princess Street Road Reconstruction Project and I'm a transportation engineer.
I'm Erica Hogland. I also work for WSP. I'm an engineer in training. And I've been leading the design on this project. Um, this button doesn't work. Just so you know. Could I click? No, him. Oh, there we go.
Now super clicking.
Excellent. Okay, so we're here tonight to talk about the results of public consultation for the Princess Street Upgrades Project. And so tonight, we're just going to provide information about how consultation went. And then in three weeks' time, Mark Allen will submit a staff report asking to make a decision on how to move forward with our preferred option. Okay? Um. Oh, we lost it. I know. Click it more.
Can you click on that page again first?
Okay, excellent. So just to recap the project, so we're up to speed again. The extent of the project go from Fulton Ave multi-use path to 15th Avenue. And the intent of the project originally were to address some drainage concerns along this stretch of road as well as upgrade the sidewalk and upgrade the road to the Town of Smithers bylaw cross-section. And so this here is the bylaw cross-section. It's an 11-meter road and a 1.5-meter sidewalk, which allows for two travel lanes and two on-street parking lanes. The Princess Street, on-street parking on Princess Street, isn't heavily used. At any given time, you might see two or three cars, but never fully at capacity. And so when we build larger streets to accommodate on-street parking, they're going to cost more for initial construction costs and maintenance. And it's not exactly a good use of funds if they're not being used. And so we're proposing to remove one or both lanes of street parking to allow space for active transportation infrastructure instead. Um, and so because this project is being built next year regardless, it's a good time for us to consider what's the best option to move forward with. And so with that, we have four options that we proposed, which was option one, what we can see here, the bylaw cross-section. Option two is bike lanes. And so the benefit of this option is that it provides designated space for pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. Option three is a multi-use path with on-street parking on one side. So this removes one lane of on-street parking and it upgrades the sidewalk to a three-meter-wide multi-use path. And the main benefit of this is that cyclists and pedestrians will be physically removed from traffic. And so in our initial presentation, there was a couple of questions regarding if it is safe to have cyclists and pedestrians sharing the same space. And the MOTI Active Transportation Guidelines does provide a bit of guidance on this. And so the recommendation is if there's more than 33 users per hour and more than 20% pedestrians, they recommend separating the modes out. And of course, we don't have data for this stretch of street because the multi-use path isn't built. But we do have data from traffic counts along the Fulton Ave multi-use path, um, which we completed for a previous project. And so during peak hours on the Fulton Ave path, which would be from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM and 3:00 PM, or sorry, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. They saw on average about 20 users per hour and about 60% cyclists. And so if we assume that we'd see similar types of traffic on this path, it would still be within the realm of a good level of service for actual transportation. Option four is the same as last option, but this has no on-street parking. And the main benefit of this option is that it saves construction costs because there's quite a bit less material in the road. Uh-oh. There we go. So since our last presentation, we've gone out and completed some public consultation with the community, which included preparing a letter which included information about project considerations and the options, which was delivered to all property owners and residents along Princess Street. The same information was posted on the Town of Smithers website, on social media, and in the newspaper. And then finally, we hosted a public town hall event in which any member of the public could come in and ask questions about the project, provide feedback and ask questions. So in total, we sent out 26 letters to property owners and residents and 20 people responded back, which represents most of the streets. We had 46 responses in total and about 25 people at the open house. So of the 46 responses, five people had feedback for us, but they didn't state a preference. Five people preferred option one. But the vast majority, 36 people, preferred one of the multi-use path options. So breaking that down, we had 24 votes for option three, uh, one side on-street parking, eight votes for option four, no on-street parking, and four people who preferred a multi-use path but didn't have a preference between the two options. Um, we've kind of organized the feedback that we heard into seven broad categories, the first being safety. The comment that we heard the most times over was that the multi-use path was the preferred option for safety, especially for children, especially when they're cycling, when they're a little bit quicker. Um, a couple of pieces of specific feedback is that the sidewalk should be wide enough to let two wheelchairs pass because this is a corridor that use that the residents of the Bulky Lodge use quite frequently. People felt that the, the speed of traffic on Princess Street can be quite fast, likely due to the fact that there's no stop signs along the entire road. And so there was support from the public for traffic calming measures, like a narrower road in spots, something like this. And then the last concern for safety was that if we put a multi-use path in, there might not be adequate sightlines between driveways to, for, for cars backing out of their driveways to see cyclists coming. And this is a concern that we share as well. We've already discussed with the town. So if we do end up going ahead with a multi-use path option, it would be something that we look at closely during detailed design and to make sure that it's safe for everybody. Um, regarding the environment, there was a couple of concerns. A lot of people felt that getting more people on bikes and walking was a good way to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in town as well as noise and pollution and fight climate change on a broader sense. There was also quite a bit of support for saving all the existing trees wherever possible and for planting new street trees if that's an option. In terms of cost, many of the people assumed that the active transportation options would cost more than the Town of Smithers typical bylaw. However, most of the options are pretty similar in cost. We haven't made detailed cost estimates, but just based on the amount of materials and past projects, we would expect that option one and two have the exact same cost as they have the exact same geometry. Option three would be slightly higher, even though it uses a little bit less pavement than option one and two. The installation of a multi-use path is a little bit more expensive because it's a bit more labor-intensive. And option four would have the lowest cost by a small margin because the amount of pavement and materials is lower. There were a couple of concerns regarding community priorities. Lots of people felt that there was other pressing issues that should be addressed before we start adding active transportation to our streets. Right now, we have the option to consider these without changing priorities of other projects or adding substantial costs to this project. So I feel that it's still worth discussing and considering. For street parking, most respondents felt that, that, uh, street parking isn't used to capacity along Princess Street. And most people also felt that some street parking is still required, especially at non-residential areas like the York Hardy Park and the Anglican Church. Um, there was a couple of people who were concerned that there isn't enough demand for dedicated active transportation infrastructure in our streets. And so I've pulled two graphs from our 2019 Smithers Active Transportation Plan. And so the one on the left shows that, um, right now, walking and cycling, if you add them up, make up 23% of the mode share here in Smithers, which is greater than the provincial average and is substantial enough to, um, have some infrastructure on busy streets. The graph on, the other graph, the second graph, shows that almost 80% of trips in Smithers take less than 15 minutes, which is much, much less than the provincial average. Because Smithers is small and flat, active transportation trips can be completed here and they're not too strenuous, which makes it a pretty appealing option and, and makes it a good candidate for more active transportation here. Uh-oh. We were going so well. Can you, can you flip the slide for me? Or am I in charge? Okay, excellent. Our last two points in our, in our feedback form, we asked respondents if they'd like to see similar projects in other locations. And of the people who did answer the question, most people said yes. The, the people that we engaged with in the public consultation process were mostly residents of Princess Street. They weren't necessarily people who were from the cycling, uh, community who already would have been swayed one way or the other. And so this kind of indicates to me that if we were to do a similar project in a different neighborhood, you'd probably see similar levels of support from them as well. Um, and then the last point here is, uh, a handful of people asked, why does this project end at 15th? It didn't seem super logical to them. And of course, this is because one of the main goals of the original project was to upgrade the sidewalk. And the sidewalk has been upgraded between 15th and 16th Ave. But if we do choose a multi-use path option, there would be quite a bit of community support to extend that to 16th Avenue is because that would make a better connected cycling network. And, uh, especially if a new daycare facility is built, it would provide that infrastructure right up to the daycare. Can you, can you do the next slide for me? Okay, this summarizes the main concerns. We've already talked about most of them, so I'll just touch on the two that are kind of new. So the first one is cars and bikes can go exist on the same road as they have for many years. This is one of the pieces of feedback we got. And this is true for low-speed, low-volume roads. So the Active Transportation Guidelines doesn't recommend any infrastructure dedicated for cyclists, for roads that are less than 30 kilometers, 30 kilometers an hour or less, and that have less than 1,000 kilometers, 1,000 vehicles per day. However, Princess Street, as well as most residential streets in Smithers, have a speed limit of 50 kilometers of an hour. So it does warrant some sort of infrastructure. Also, feedback suggests that based on this specific road, that a multi-use path feels like a safer option for, for children particularly than just cycling on the road. Uh, the second point is that cycling infrastructure cannot be used in the winter and therefore it shouldn't be built. Smithers is relatively snow-free for about seven months a year. And in many locations, when you have safe infrastructure that's maintained and plowed year-round, people choose to cycle all year round anyways. The rest of them have kind of chatted about. So you can go to the last slide. Okay. And so in closing, you've got two main takeaways. Based on the feedback from the initial council meeting and from public consultation, the most supported option here is option three, the multi-use path with on-street parking on one side. Most people felt that this struck a balance between street parking, but also dedicated safe infrastructure. And a lot of people stated that the multi-use path was the most comfortable, safe option for cycling. The second point would be is that there's seems to be quite a bit of public support for more active transportation projects in the community. And this indicates to me that the town has an opportunity here to relook at their bylaws and so that some of these kind of options can be integrated into the bylaws. So on future road upgrades, we can automatically consider these options instead of having to go out and do a dedicated consultation. And, and that's all I have. So thank you for listening to the presentation and I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. That was great.
Not too fast.
Not too fast.
Okay.
Um, okay, I see councillor raise hands. So we'll look to the table and we'll start with councillor Ray.
I'm only going off the, the drawings. Is the, what's the, um, proposed surface for the multi-use pathways? Is it also asphalt or is it cement?
Um, MOTI Active Transportation Guidelines recommends asphalt as it's the smoothest. However, I think that that would be a discussion for the town. I know that the Fulton Ave multi-use path is concrete right now. And so ultimately, it would be decision for the town. Um, but both, both options would be on the table still.
Okay. And then the other one is just a comment. From what I've read in other places with people cycling, if we put deciduous trees, then we're going to have to clean up leaves off the multi-use pathway. So we just wanted to put that out there. I like street trees, but there is a consideration there that may, may have some, uh, discussion warranted with the Works Department for sure.
Thanks, councillor Ray. Is that your hand, councillor Patterson? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'll save some of my comments, I believe, for the next meeting when we have a conversation. Or should I ask all questions? No?
Ask them all.
Okay, sounds good. Well, first, I just want to say I really liked your presentation, um, especially for being an engineer in training. It was really impressive, especially the presentation itself. Um, question about the safety measures. I live in an area where I have the high fence on both areas and I constantly am terrified because there's tons of little children going past. So I really appreciate that concern. And I'm just kind of curious because I've always wondered myself what that might look like, but more specifically around costs. So do you have examples, um, that you're already thinking of in mind? And can you give us a projection? Do you think it would be significantly more or is that sort of part of the course?
For cost of the overall project?
For, you talk about options.
Yeah. So options in terms of addressing, uh, conflicts at road crossings is the closer that the multi-use path is to the property line, the less space the car has to see that cyclist coming, the closer the multi-use path is to the road, you're more likely to see them because they're closer to the traffic. And so we could, if you had a really, um, so the, the first option would, would be to just ensure that there's enough sightlines from that driveway that they can see the multi-use path coming both ways. But if there's something like a large fence, we have the option to pull the multi-use path a bit closer to the road there so that the person backing up or coming out of the driveway has a bit more time to see them and vice versa, the cyclist. There's also an option to add line painting for the cyclist to alert to them that there's a hazard coming up and that they should go slow or some sort of signage. And so in terms of costs, well, I guess it depends on, on what you do. A sign doesn't cost a whole lot of money, a couple hundred dollars to, uh, buy and install, moving the multi-use path. Same thing, like more curves cost a bit more money, but it's tough to say exact numbers. It wouldn't be substantial. Yeah.
Um, and then maybe some more questions, um, through to staff, maybe Mr. Allen. I like the comment that others had around support for the continuation to 16th, um, for the consideration if we do put in the childcare facility. When we talk about this at the next meeting, will that be something that will be included in the report for consideration?
Mr. Allen?
Yeah, thank you, Rachel. Absolutely. Um, if the, as, uh, Ms. Hogland said, we're going to now bring a staff report to council at, at the next, well, in, hopefully in the next meeting. And it'll have a recommendation based on what we heard and, uh, if there's any council feedback as well. But, um, taking it all the way to 16th, uh, does make sense if it is a multi-use pathway because that will be a, a new construction over the sidewalk that was, uh, reconstructed, uh, just a couple of years ago. Um, the other aspect is 16th Avenue is a collector's street from Highway 16 up to Main Street. So that, that is already, uh, earmarked for future, uh, construction of, uh, pedestrian. And, and we haven't discussed multi-use pathways on 16th yet. But, um, that would tie in nicely with Princess Street's upgrade because, 16th Avenue would be, uh, it would tie in with the Fulton Avenue, the new cycle 16 connector as well. And, um, and then we would likely look at, um, including Princess Street in the, um, upgrading it to the, or including it in the mult, in the active transportation plan and po- probably assigning it as a, uh, collector's street as well. So it would match 16th Avenue. So that's some of the considerations we'll, we'll talk about in this. So that's some of the considerations we'll, we'll talk about in the staff report.
Just a general comment. I just wanted to say, um, council's aware that I've been opposed to some of the other conversations we've had around the cycle 16 and then the main street site, but then seeing this project as well, I'm starting to sway more in support. Um, I think the comment that was made around engagement with community, if council decides that this is the type of style that we want to go to in the future, I just want to say I'm really interested in that type of conversation because now I'm starting to see the bigger picture and that some of my concerns related to the cycle 16 connector was around safety and how we manage that. So I just want to say I really appreciate the last comment that was made around maybe foregoing engagement. If council has an idea of what the future might look like, um, because I'm really in favor of this option. I think it's beautiful and safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Patterson. Uh, Council Bukama.
Thanks, Mayor Ashwell. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say that I'm glad option three is the most supported option. I think it strikes the best balance between providing options for active transportation, but also recognizing there's still a lot of vehicle use in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Bukama. Council Elliot.
I'll just mimic Council Patterson's comment about the act of transportation and having the multi-use pathway separated from the street for safety sake. I think it's a good project. I like option three as well. So appreciate the work you guys have done for the support. Thanks.
Thanks, Council Elliot. Anything, Council Leonard?
Nothing, nothing more to add than, uh, that hasn't already been said, but appreciate the submission and, and I love option three I did the last time. So, um, I'm happy that the feedback came back that way.
Thanks, Council Leonard. I just have a couple of questions. Um, good point on the trees, Council Ray. Didn't occur to me, but lots of street or lots of tree options, one would think. But, um, I'm looking at option three, but I have a question and I had a question about the boulevard the last time. And Mr. Lawrence wasn't there. So what is the main purpose of the boulevard, the wide boulevard? Why do we need the wide boulevard? Does anyone know? Like it was deferred to you and you weren't here. So now I'm asking you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Ashwell. I would actually defer that to WSP since we have them in the building.
They were here the last time. Just saying. Okay. Over to you guys.
Yeah, the boulevard, like the standard right of way for all streets in Smithers is 20 meters wide. So regardless of how big you be, build your, your street and your cross section, you're still going to have a bit of space on either side because that's how the legal lots are laid out. Um, the wide boulevard does offer a couple of benefits though, like when you're installing new infrastructure, like telecommunications and overhead power lines, they provide space to put that infrastructure. And then also if your street isn't perfectly flat, you often need to have a bit of space to change from the level of the street to the level of the property line. So like on Princess Street is a good example. The crossfall generally goes on the north side of the street is quite a bit higher and then the south side is quite a bit lower. And so to put the street in, we need to have space to allow, um, the grading of the earth to meet the property line before you get onto private property.
Thanks for that. Cause when I look at this cross section, like there's a lot of space. I mean, I think this photo is just adjacent to the park. So what would be on that surface of the boulevard? I guess what I'm getting at is like we're, we're, um, you know, in some of the other designs, there was a bit more room for the multi-use path or a bit more separation. And I'm just curious why we wouldn't take up a bit more space. We could have more, more room in the multi-use path. Still have two lanes of traffic and have a parking lane and just have less boulevard. But I'm not sure the importance of the boulevard. So that's where I'm getting it.
So there is an option to, to move the centerline of the street away from the center of the right of way. Right now, the feedback we've gotten from the town is that, um, uh, maintenance staff likes the, likes the street to be in the center of the right of way because that provides them a reference point for where property lines would likely be. And so if you move the street away from the center of the right of way, now you need to know that specific street to know where people's private property is starting. That being said, if that's something that we're willing to vary, we could move the entire street towards, in this case, the north side of the street, which would give more space, a smaller boulevard on the north side and more space for the multi-use path. It's just about how we want to design our infrastructure here in Smithers.
Okay. Thank, I see you closer. I'm just going to finish here though, if I may.
Could I?
Yeah, you bet.
Um, the, the conceptual images that we've shared for, for the options are conceptual. So they don't capture all the detail of the grading. But in that area next to, uh, Yorkarty Park, um, the backside of the curb on the park side, there's actually going to be a swale in there because there's going to be a lawn basin, um, between the curb line and the property line. And so some of that space, some of the boulevard is needed for capturing, um, water that's coming off the park that, um, won't make it to the curb.
Okay. Thanks for that. And I mean, my heart's not set on anything here. It just seems when I look at that lot, that large space of something, that's going to be some kind of grass, I imagine. And then on the other side of the street, we're going to have, you know, another strip of boulevard. This, or where is it? The, yeah, bit of boulevard, the multi-use path and a buffer. I just, anyway, it just seems curious. So again, my heart's not set on anything, but it seems in that wide right of way, we might able to be able to achieve more. It would affect the price. I understand that. But, um, in your option two, like there's just a lot more separation, just even on the, uh, the bike lane and the sidewalk. So I find that part appealing. I'm, I'm content with option three, except I think it'd look really funny if it's all built. And then we've got like 20 feet of grass just on one side of the road and a whole bunch of built infrastructure on the other. So it's just food for thought. Council Ray.
Oh, just, just, and it looks different, but in the two pictures of boulevard, it's still 4.5 meters in the two options. But I, I wanted to ask about if you were to move the centerline of the road over, what would that do to the alignment of the intersections? Um, like at 16th and at, um, oh my goodness, ninth.
Um, you'd want to jog the, the alignment, um, not at the intersection. And so, um, we're tying in at the Fulton Ave path on the, um, I don't know, is it the south end? And so that's not at an intersection. So jogging it there would be fine. And then, um, you would, yeah, have to find a, a good spot on the 16th Avenue side to jog it before it meets 16th Avenue.
Okay. Any other questions? Um, then the only thought, other thought, oh, go ahead, Mr. Allen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Ashwell. Just had one more comment that, um, we did hear at the, uh, public engagement that, uh, there may be, or there was a desire for possible more parking in the Yorkarty Park area. So some of that parking could be developed in that wide boulevard. You know, we could have angled parking or perpendicular parking installed there if there's enough room. So I think some of the, yeah, a lot of those aspects and variables are going to be addressed at the design stage. And, and we'll bring that back to council.
Okay. And I, I guess the one last thing that occurred to me as you were saying that is, um, if we just have the, like a wide boulevard on one side, that might be a great place for bigger street trees as well. So that we keep the path clear of leaves, but we could have beautiful trees on the other side. I love them on both sides, but whatever. Okay. Last call. Already. Thanks so much for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let me catch up. We're at the minutes. Enjoy your evening, people. You're welcome to stay with us all evening, should you want to. Okay, we are at eight, one, the minutes of October 8th. For approval, please. Council Bukama, Council Leonard, all in favor? The opposed and that's carried unanimously. We have nothing under item nine. And councillor reports. First up, Council Bukama.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Ashwell. So first of all, there is a visitor's center report, which I think is there more just for information sake. Unless there are questions. Okay. Um, on Saturday, October 12th, Council Raven and I both attended the St. James Anglican Soup Kitchen and helped serve a Thanksgiving dinner there. It was actually quite touching. I was just struck by how appreciative, um, the people were to receive a meal. And instead of doing the usual soup, they actually did a spaghetti dinner, which went over quite well. And I just, I've said it before, but I'd just like to express my appreciation again to the faith communities in Smithers who've stepped up to the plate to make sure there's a place to go for a warm meal, both on Saturday and on Sunday. And today I attended the Northern BC Supply Chain Forum. Was not very well attended. There were three of us, but it was still a very interesting afternoon. The, the focus was on, um, us providing feedback on how we thought, um, the rail lines and the highway 16 corridors or serve northern communities, uh, well. And also what are the challenges surrounding Highway 16 and the rail corridor? And it's kind of the beginning of a fact finding mission. So they're, they're visiting lots of communities and asking the exact same questions, how people feel about, uh, the highway 16 corridor and, um, how well we're served by the rail line going across the north. There will, there is a survey link that they asked if I would distribute to all members of council. So there is opportunity for the other six of you to provide feedback if you'd like. Um, that link is going to be sent to me sometime this week and then I'll distribute it to all the members of council. And that's it for my report. Thank you, Mayor Ashwell.
Thanks, Council Bukama. Any questions? Already, Council Elliot.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Kennedy Library Board Meeting October 9th. The ministers are attached here. Now just, I'll touch on a couple of things. So Linda McDougall is retiring this month. She's worked at the library for the last 20 years. I remember I took my kids there. She was there often, working there and, uh, doing a great job. So her last, there is a farewell for her on Wednesday, October 23rd. Um, library is a busy place, we all know. And then they hosted the candidate event, October 5th. So, um, 49 people attended, I was told. So they said it was well attended and it was a great night. And, uh, I'm glad they had lots of people attending there. That's all for me. Thanks.
Thanks, Council Elliot. Um, it, I did note the retirement of Ms. McDougall. That is a long career and one that should be acknowledged. So thank you for pointing it out. And I also attended the candidate thing and it was an interesting concept. There weren't so many people at any one moment. So as you circled around, it was, uh, it was easy to chat to people because it was pretty small crowds moving around. So interesting concept. Um, any questions for Council Elliot? Uh, Council Bukama?
Um, not really a question, but, um, if you don't mind, can I just highlight the fact there is a book sale happening this Friday and Saturday. For those who are listening, um, online, I just thought it'd be good to have that mentioned. I think it starts at five o'clock on Friday and then is most of Saturday as well. It's kind of a, it's an important fundraiser for the library and it's at St. Joe's.
Thanks, Council Bukama. Okay. And Council Elliot, anything else? Okay. Council Leonard.
Um, earlier today, I attended a regular meeting of the BV Museum. I haven't been in a few months. So it was nice to see those folks again and, uh, specifically, um, related to the town, we talked about their grant and aid presentation coming up in a couple of weeks. And, um, Ms. Westby also mentioned that they're still, their lease is still outstanding and not signed. And actually had requested that, um, when it comes before council to approve that the, the start date is actually the current date instead of it being backdated. So she did specifically request that and, um, some mention about roof repairs, but I'm sure you're aware and leave that with stuff. Thanks.
Thanks, Council Leonard. Uh, Council Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor Ashwell. Um, nothing to report on what I have attended, but just wanted to give council a heads up that next week I'll be in Victoria. There is a provincial community safety and wellbeing conference. So if there's anything specific that folks want me to bring forward, um, there's going to be many opportunities to ask, um, community leaders, provincial leaders, Canadian leaders, um, Mayor Ashwell will actually be on one of the panels herself. And then opportunities to have, uh, one-on-one conversations around a gamut of, uh, subject matter around community safety and wellbeing. Um, one of the things that I will mention, uh, just briefly, that's at the forefront of my mind is just some of the things, um, that I've seen, um, unfortunately in our community related, um, to recent, um, uh, campaign materials. And just wanted to say that, um, as community leaders, I absolutely think about all of you and just our safety. And I'm just thinking, um, that I just want us to feel comfortable in the positions that we do within our community. So that's absolutely something that I'll bring forward, uh, for discussion with folks too, just to see what they're thinking. Um, but if there's anything else that folks want me to bring forward, just send me a note and I'll be happy to do that. And I'll report back, uh, when I get back. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Patterson. Any questions or comments for Council Patterson? Um, Council Raven is away. Council Ray.
A couple of things. Uh, first of all, I attended the six by six sale, uh, at the Art Gallery. And Council Raven was also there. Council Raven walked away with a huge stack and also bought me a Christmas present, which was nicer. So that was a, an excellent evening. I, I don't know how much was raised and, and all, but it was a very successful evening. Um, and secondly, I, I would just, after the results of the latest election, I'd like to publicly thank Nathan Cullen for his years of service, both to, uh, as an MP and an MLA. Um, I think we always, even at council, but the public for sure doesn't always know how much work goes in from our MPs and MLAs and how much does get done that people don't know about. Um, and with that being said, I think Nathan did an excellent job. Certainly didn't always agree with the overall politics, but I think he did an awesome job for the community. And I look forward to, uh, working with our new MLA, Sharon Hartwell.
Thanks, Council Ray. Um, yeah, that was great. That was on my list. So I appreciate that you, uh, jumped in there. Any questions or comments for Council Ray? And I'm sorry, I missed the six by six. I couldn't be there and I walked home with a stack. The last time they had one too. Such a cool event. And they're little, like they're only six by six. Like you can have quite a few, hardly costs anything. Um, the standing Committee on Strategic Priorities report is there for your information. It's been a quiet couple of weeks for me. Um, I did attend the Fall Fair Management Committee meeting with, uh, Council Patterson. And there'll be some follow-up, I guess, before our next meeting. Um, I participated in a mayor's interview with CBC on October 18th, pre-election. Just asking about issues was sort of a fun thing to do. I will be with, uh, Council Patterson for part of that conference. I can't be there for the entire conference, but, uh, I'm glad Council Patterson will be there to take in the whole thing. It looks like a really excellent, um, uh, agenda. And I, I am just going to take a moment as well to thank our MLA, uh, Nathan. I did have a chat with him on Monday. It's only Tuesday, so yesterday, but echo your comments, like thanks for your work. Be a new era in his life. And I've taken a moment to congratulate, um, our, our MLA and incoming, I can't think of the right word right now for what that means. But to reach out to Sharon as well. So there'll be, uh, we have still a week of figuring out what's actually going to happen. And then some time after that to figure out what will actually happen once the dust settles. But, um, yeah, people do work hard and I think respect ought to be delivered to those who are putting themselves out there. It's not an easy job as all of us at the table know. And I think those at provincial and federal levels take even more heat. So thanks, Nathan. And once the dust settles, then we'll be welcoming Sharon and, uh, figuring out how we're going to work together. And I'll leave it there. Okay, let's move on. So we were at, let's jump to the 14s then. So we have a report from a Mr. Lee, forming character permit application for 1215 Main Pacificana with a recommendation. Council Bukama.
Uh, I'll move this stuff for recommendation.
Thank you, Council Ray. Seconds and discussion comments. Quiet table, Council Ray.
Well, I, I would just like to say that I, I do appreciate, uh, seeing that they're making the building accessible with a ramp. It's the kind of thing you probably only have an opportunity to do when you're doing a full renovation. But it was good to see that they thought of that.
Thanks. You gave me a second to remember. I had one question. So for Mr. Allen, I guess, but it's just on the building facade. And, um, I was And um, I was trying to connect the drawing to our standards. And where I see the stone siding, I just want a clarity. Is that like, that's like actual rock, like real rock? That, that is what our standards say. So I just wanted to make sure that's actually what we're doing, Mr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Atul. I believe it, it, the, the details aren't there, whether it's uh like a faux. Rock or real rock, real stone. Um, that's something we'd have to confirm. Um, at, at the Foreman Character Development Permit. Process, we, we don't typically get into those details and we, but staff did feel that. What's presented does match the design guidelines in the O C P. Um, at the building permit stage, uh those details will be made. Uh, there'll be more, there'll be specified on the building drawings, so. Um, if there's any, i- if there's any difference between the building plans and the development permit plans, staff would always uh. Bring that back to council.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, it's just hard to see from the drawing. I, I've got no issues with the design. I was just going through the detail against our um. The guidelines in the um that are attached here and it does say, I think it says natural stone, so. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All, oh, Counsel Buikuma.
Um, yeah, just a general comment. Um. I've been in that building recently and it is one old dilapidated building. So for me. The thought of it being replaced by that is uh quite encouraging. I think it'll be a wonderful addition to Main Street. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Buikuma. Okay, ready? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Um, fourteen-two, report from Mr. Allen. Too long a title. Airport South Slope. I'm stopping there with a couple of recommendations. Counselor Ray.
I mean, both recommendations.
And Counsel Patterson, were you seconding? Okay, moved and seconded. Um, discussion or questions? Go ahead, Counsel Ray.
I, I just actually really like the idea of adding in um what the possible risks are to a slope failure. I think that'll be a very important information to bring with us when we're um seeking funding.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Two, uh fourteen-three, report from Mr. Allen. Main Street Multi-Use Pathway with two recommendations. Are there questions of clarity first, or does someone want to put it on the floor? Counsel Patterson, you're moving. Seconder, Counsel Elliot. Okay. Uh, comments or questions? Counsel Ray.
Well, it's, it's kind of the same comment I had about the Princess Street one and that's just whether. Whether this is going to be a standard that we apply to every street. Um, if we're not going to, I kind of find it. A little bit redundant to have one on Main Street and one on Princess Street. Um. But that's not, you know, I actually think that if we're going to put new infrastructure, that might as well serve everybody on every street. That we can. Um, although I do think we need to look into. You know, I, I've, I've said it a lot of times around the table and I certainly bear some of the responsibility, but. Adding all this new infrastructure when we haven't been taking care of the stuff that we already have concerns me a little bit as well. Um. And of course, we're moving to making sure that we have full asset management plans, but um I think. Before we have the wider uh discussion about whether we want to do this on every street we're rebuilding or, or building. Um, we definitely need to know what it's going to cost to maintain it as well. And I, and I. I hate to sound like I'm on a soapbox, but we really need to figure out what to do about e-bikes and electronic. Um, because, you know, that was one of the comments I heard it. Um, the princess one was, was somebody actually had mentioned that they actually preferred the two bike lanes because they wanted to keep. The e-bikes and stuff away from children, so.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. I just wanted to look to staff. I saw some staff hands and I'll see you. I know, I think, Mr. Dur.
I'll only comment on a portion of uh what Counsel Ray said. Um, so the one thing, looking at the two different proposals between Princess and Maine. Princess runs to Tenth Avenue and then the Main Street Proposed Multi-Use actually runs from Maine to the Highway sixteen. So there's not necessarily duplication of the, the same areas.
Thanks, that's a good point.
Sorry, you're gonna actually have to say that again, because I didn't follow you.
So the proposed multi-use pathway for Princess uh uh Street right now, it runs. Right to Tenth is where it's, or where it ends. And the proposed multi-use pathway for Main Street runs Tenth to the Highway sixteen. So it actually picks up where the um Princess Street finisher leaves or been, yeah, concludes.
The piece I'm not getting, and I hate to admit when I understand something that everyone else knows, is just the connection on Tenth then. So what's happening on Tenth?
That's to be determined.
Okay.
But as I was just saying, there's no redundancy in the, the, the portion that they're covering there.
And we still have to figure out ten.
Correct.
Okay, now I'm with you. Okay, then I saw hands. Counsel Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Rashid. Question through to staff. If we were going to have a conversation um based on one of the recommendations around the policy piece, for example, or to Counsel Ray's point, the. Future design, um would that be something that we would do through strategic planning? Or what, what, when would we explore that type of conversation?
Mr. Dur.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Um, sorry, it probably wasn't clear. I'll try my best. Just thinking about um. Comments that were made around maybe the redundancy around public engagement, if we're seeing that people are swaying towards this multi-use. Um, type of design and that it's something that we're continuing to have at the table. Is that something that we would talk about um at a strategic planning um uh committee, the whole meeting? Uh, it's just something that I was wondering myself and that I saw that we replaced some sidewalk that um needed to be done. Um, but we actually ended up using brick where I remember at this committee, we talked before about whether or not we felt that was appropriate. So I think. We've had conversations time and time again about how we're replacing um some of that infrastructure. So I was just curious at what point would council have that type of conversation?
Yeah, certainly. So in terms of the strategic planning, that would identify, you know, working through those types of conversations and identifying what our priorities are in terms of. You know, replacement of that type of infrastructure and as well addition of that type of infrastructure. Um, I think that would be a committee of the whole um or something along those lines. And certainly I think as we move into asset management, uh that discussion is probably going to come up, uh which we'll definitely be exploring asset management further this year. As we look to bring in uh a resource benefit alliance piece.
The other thing I'm going to add to that is we have identified active transportation in our strategic priorities. So I think as we drill down, staff are actually working on the fact that we put it in the strategic priorities. And now. As always, I think in our entity and entities like ours, we're somewhat driven by opportunity. So the cycle sixteen path was built. We decided a few years ago to do a connector. Their funding opportunities and changes that have happened at Modi over the last while that enable more things to happen. And then you add Princess, but she has to be rebuilt. Bottom up that in some ways, I think what I'm seeing is that we have a strategic priority for active transportation. Staff, take the opportunities for funding as they come, because that's a bit, that, that's driven by other entities. And then the opportunity at Princess, which just, it's going to be rebuilt one way or the other. So I, I guess I'm, I sense that the strategic priority, priorities is being followed. Uh, where, where Counsel Ray, I think, was going is, or do we want to talk about, do we want to apply this to roads? In a more broad sense, other than the ones that were identified in the active transportation plan. So I think there are some pieces that we could discuss at a broader level. But in terms of the actual strategic priorities, I think that's been identified. So we just have some kind of mucky bits. That we probably need to get back to. Does that help? Okay. Okay, so back to the reporter. If there's other questions or comments for staff, or if I've misspoken anything in that last attempt at an explanation. Okay, then I have a couple carrying on with my. Perhaps not understanding. So, couple of things. And maybe this is where um Mr. Duer was trying to clear it up, but. On the, the Main Street one, as I'm looking at these, this map. So I realize it's a concept, but if we put a pathway in there. Can you just talk me through the room that we have between? Like on, on Maine, we have these big ditches and then we have property lines and just sort of talk through how that might work. Like do, what sort of space and how would we actually fit something in there? Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Atul. Um, yeah, I can uh clarify a couple of those points. Um, we, we haven't completed the um. Detail design of this yet because we want to uh submit the grant application first, but design is. Also a part of the project. Um. So can give you a definitive answer, but this would rec- include uh curb and gutter being. Constructed and boulevards similar to what you saw on uh Princess Street, uh the multi-use pathway. Uh, concept designs that you saw. So that's the intention for uh this pathway on Main Street as well.
And so that would be curb and gutter on the side where the path is. And would the other side retain ditches?
Uh, at this point, it is curb and gutter up to Eighth Avenue, I believe. And then beyond that, it would be. Brought up to the, to the standard at the time when that uh area develops. Between uh Eighth Avenue and Ninth Avenue. So it, the standard would be curb and gutter and sidewalk on that side in the future. But that wouldn't be part of this project. It would, it would just be multi-use pathway and curb and gutter on, just on the north side of Main Street.
So the uh ever-elusive storm sewer still lays in front of us?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And that might. That might be it. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, the, oh, Counsel Patterson, sorry.
Thank you, Rashid. It made me think about actually just a question, because I cannot remember through to Mr. Allen. Is the construction that's being done between Tenth and Eleventh Avenue, is that section going to be also um like multi-use? Like, will it carry on? I can't remember.
Mr. Allen.
Currently, from Tenth Avenue up to Sixteenth on Main Street, it. It, it's currently bicycle lanes on both sides of Main Street and then the single walkway. As you see, um, well, that currently exists on that's on the north side of Main Street. So now the, the intent was to tie this multi-use pathway up to the Tenth Avenue. Intersection where the Fulton Avenue uh multi-use pathway connects. And that, that would be the. As Mr. Duer was uh explaining at the beginning, that would be the, you know, closing the loop back to the highway. Yep.
Was that your hand, Counsel Leonard? Okay. I guess the one other thing is actually, like, I actually really love these things. Um, even if I'm not getting some of the details. And I think what would be really interesting to see at some point. You know, like where the Fulton Avenue pa- or not Fulton Avenue, where that, unless it's called that, like where the path comes back to Main Street. Like, that's super cool. And then it just ends. And so what would be interesting to see is ideas, not right now, but. On how do we bring that path across to the other part of town? You know, at some point we'll be talking about um development of Central Park. And what are the opportunities to bring a path through there? Like, how do we connect to the rest of town? So you, you may already have ideas. And I, that's not a question that needs an answer now, but as these things develop, like, how do we get to Barclay Drive? Like, how do we actually connect the town with these paths? So when I'm asking these questions, it comes with, like, I actually really am supportive of trying to figure out how we build this connection. And it's hard to rebuild it over an established street grid. You know, where do we actually find the room to create a route? Over some of the smaller roads as well. Okay, that's it. Anything else? I keep asking that and then I keep talking, Mr. Allen.
Yeah, Mayor Atul, I, I do want to apologize for, the, the, the maps are a little bit confusing. They're, you know, two separate maps and uh. Uh, I, perhaps uh when staff bring back the next report, we'll include the Active Transportation Plan map that shows. Those, you know, broader connections like you're referring to. Because they, they, they do exist on the Active Transportation Plan map that shows uh future pathways and, and cycling ways, so.
Thanks, Mr. Allen.
Okay.
Okay, let's vote on this one. Um, it's on the table, both recommendations, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're at the bees. I'm sorry, we've removed fifteen ones. I just, I didn't remove it. It's a five. So sixteen-one, we have bylaw, um nineteen seventy-seven for adoption this evening. Counsel Ray. Is there a seconder? Counsel Elliot, thank you. Discussion, Counsel Buikuma.
Uh, I'm not going to repeat the reasons I gave at our last meeting, but I am going to be a no vote.
Thanks, Counsel Buikuma. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes with Counsel Buikuma opposed? And uh item sixteen-two, bylaw nineteen seventy-eight for adoption. Move her in a second, or please. Counsel Ray. Counsel Elliot, thank you. Any comments? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries with Counsel Buikuma opposed? And, sorry, did you say something to me? No, okay, hearing things too. Uh, sixteen-three, we have bylaw nineteen seventy-nine for adoption, please. Please in charge is bylaw, Counsel Leonard. Seconder, please. Counsel Patterson. Any discussion? Okay, and all in favor? Any opposed? Uh, that passes with Counsel Elliot opposed. And um sixteen-four bylaw, excuse me, bylaw nineteen eighty, permissive tax exemptions. For adoption, please. Counsel Ray, the seconder, Counsel Leonard. Discussion? All in favor? And opposed? Carries with Counsel Elliot opposed. Okay. That went fast, but there's been lots of discussion before this evening. Okay, we were up to correspondence seventeen-one and we have a letter from the Youth Parliament of B C. And they're asking us to encourage youth from our municipality to sit as members of the Youth Parliament. Any thoughts? I'll just pass it by. And seventeen-two from S F U. And we have a letter regarding airport and my, I haven't had a chance to talk to staff on this one. But my suggestion would be to actually just refer this one to staff. And um get a letter back from staff or report back from staff. So if you want to talk about it, I'll take comments now and then look for that motion, Counsel Ray.
Well, given. The financial situation at the airport, I'm not entirely sure if this is doable without donations. Um, the space is not the greatest anyways. No baggage carousel ever is. It's always crowded. And I always thought, oh, more room would be better, but you go to Vancouver and everybody crowds around the carousels there as well. Um, you know, I. There's a bit of disparagement about the Bear and, and Steelhead uh display there and. I, I kind of like it. The other display, I believe, is paid uh that's mentioned in here, so um. I'm not in the airport. I guess I'm not paying attention when I'm in the airport, especially when I come home. Um, so, but I, I just, you know, thinking of the finances of the airport, I'm not really too sure that this would be possible at this time.
Mr. Dur.
Yeah, so Steph has talked about this one and we believe that significant efforts were made, especially during the renovation of the airport. Uh, to include cultural, um, uh more cultural aspects within the airport. And at this point, we haven't identified opportunities for such and it's certainly one that we will continue to pursue. Uh, but we just don't have a viable path for it at this time, but certainly we'll keep it on our radar.
Thanks, Mr. Dur. Um, we can look to council, but. I guess I'll just look to you if it's appropriate, then just to refer it back to you and we can get any thoughts or recommendations for you, Mr. Blackburn, if there are some.
Yep, absolutely. Would, or counsel like that as a reporter?
My personal feeling is that I would like to respond to this, and I don't want to respond to it without an opportunity to hear at least from you or Mr. Blackburn. So it perhaps doesn't have to be a formal report. I mean, I could just look to the table if folks are comfortable with that. I could just speak with Mr. Blackburn, make sure that my history is correct on this, and write a letter of response. Counselor Ray?
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable with just council authorizing you to write a letter. Staff's pretty busy, so.
Okay. And I got nothing to do, I'm telling you. Okay. Good work, Counselor Ray. Counselor Patterson? Mr. Dur?
I was just going to say, staff can support with the writing of that letter, absolutely.
Thanks, Mr. Dur. Counselor Patterson?
Nothing more to say, just recognizing that we just have a few shortages and that we're, yeah, we have a lot of competing priorities. So again, while I appreciate some of the sentiment within it, I just don't see it as a priority, so I will just follow office of the mayor's lead as far as how we tread about our response, because I agree, there should be some sort of recognition that we're always looking to receive feedback, but I just don't see it as a priority at this time.
Okay. Counselor Ray?
I'll move to that council authorizes the mayor to write a response to this letter.
Is there a seconder? Counselor Bukama seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Okay, then seventeen-three, letter from, actually, I'm not sure of the names, I think it's a Mr. Rosario. Yeah, Mark, Mr. Rosario. This is also one that I actually just wanted to send to staff to get some feedback. I haven't had a chance to ask staff about this, but it's not the first time we've had a request for additional flags. So I'm getting the nod from Mr. Lawrence. If, if you're willing, can we just refer this one to staff? Questions or comments if you have them, though. Counselor Patterson?
Do, do you want to go first? Okay, okay. I just had a quick question, your worship, around, maybe it's through to staff. If we have a policy around requests specific to flags, if I could just get a comment around that?
We do not.
Okay. I just started to get flashbacks from some of my early, early days on council. And just wondering about, not where we draw the line, but how do we ensure that we create inclusivity for all folks in future requests? So maybe I'll just save my comment for when we do have a conversation around strategic priorities. Just, yeah, I think I've sort of already made my point, but just something that I'm thinking about, and how do we make that determination moving forward? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Patterson.
That was exactly what I was going to say, is what is in my ignorance. I don't know what the process is for, for the flags that are currently on Main Street, so I think that if there's not sort of due process, that maybe that should be developed.
Thanks, Counselor Leonard. Okay, so how about a motion then to refer to staff, please? Counselor Ray, you wanted to say something?
Well, I just said, what's going to end up happening is we'll have another, somebody will want to fly a flag that's not popular. And then we'll have a, a problem on our hands. It's kind of like we did when, with the pro-life flag. And maybe, maybe they're best off to one-off, so the community can have a conversation, but you know, I don't think the Bangladeshi flag seems to be too controversial, so I'm happy to refer it to staff.
Okay. Let's just do that by motion. If I can have a motion to refer to staff, please, Counselor Bukama, and a seconder, Counselor Leonard. All right. Any further discussion, Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, worship. When we say refer to staff, would that include? So if I was having a conversation around referring to our strategic priorities, developing a policy further, that would be a motion that I would have to make now, or it can come later when we actually meet as a committee, when we have our committee of the whole?
Let me just, I'm going to take a crack at it. Counselor Ray, do you mind just taking your mic off?
Sure.
I'll go to Mr. Dur in a second, but with, with a request like this, I guess I'm going to try to relate to your comment on strategic priorities. So we see strategic, I see strategic priorities as like broad direction. So we want to support, you know, cultural diversity. We want to support community livability. And this piece about how we might represent communities under one of those big banners is a bit more operational in my view. And that's why I think it's appropriate to send it over to Mr. Dur and Mr. Lawrence. There is a map of Main Street showing where all the flags are. There's been some historical change, some whimsical change sometimes. But it let, to let these folks take a look at what's there, find out are there gaps, you know, are there places where we could fit something in and get some feedback that way? And it, I think this one's quite operational. And that at the strategic level, we'd be doing things like saying we want to have, I don't know, like under livability. We want to have a beautiful Main Street. We want to have some welcoming features. We want to be inclusive. But not to this level, how we would actually put up those, that's sort of how I'm seeing it. So I don't know that this would necessarily go to strategic priorities unless we're bringing it up to that level. So, Mr. Dur, you wanted to add something? Okay. I'm just gonna, because I'm constantly looking this way, I'm just looking back to see if I've ignored you somehow. Counselor Ray?
Respectfully, it doesn't have to be a strategic priority for council to recognize that it's important to have a policy. Because without a policy, you know, I'll use a ridiculous example that wouldn't happen, but if somebody wanted to fly a Confederate flag on Main Street, that's not really up to the staff to set community standards. That's up to us, I believe. So I, that's where I think a policy might come into play.
I don't actually disagree with that. I was simply saying I didn't know that it had to go to strategic priorities. Staff can actually recommend a policy. So I'm just saying that this, in my view, is operational, and it's first step is with staff. They're going to bring it back to us. We'll see a recommendation, we'll like it or we won't like it. But rather than us at this moment trying to describe that direction, why don't we just send it there and see what staff bring back? So that's actually what I'm getting at. Rather than elevating it to a strategic priority. Mr. Dur?
Well, and certainly any council member can make a motion for the development of a policy at any time. And it could also be a recommendation to go to the street, Strategic Priorities Committee. But yeah, I think that certainly staff has kind of heard the conversation. We can bring back something to council. Just explaining potential pathways forward, and certainly council can make that decision at that time.
Okay, anything else on this one? And I've lost the bouncing ball. Do we actually have a motion on the floor? We do, to refer to staff. Okay. Further comments? One last call? Last look? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, and thanks for the conversation, folks. So on the Bs, anything you want to move forward? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. I'll just note that the, unless it's changed again, the Diwali festival is actually, it's been relocated to November first. There's been some updated information. And not seeing anything else in the eighteens. So we have nineteen-one. Request for a letter of support from Smithers Community Services for their NDI application for the shuttle program. Counselor Patterson?
I'll move the recommendation.
Seconder, please? Counselor Bukama? Discussion? Counselor Ray?
I was actually, because it was all eight item, I, I kind of skimmed through it really quickly. But I'm just, was wondering if staff knows how about this is going to complement rather than affect, because we already have curb-to-curb service provided from transit, and I was just wondering. You know, I'm thinking because of Smithers Community Services, that, that they know it's going to be more of a compliment, but I'm, I'm a little concerned about it affecting the ridership of, of our main transit.
Maybe I'll take a crack at it first then, Mr. Dur. Just my, my recollection from the Transit Committee meetings is that we aren't able to meet all the curb-to-curb requests that because of the schedule, which has to be met first. And then there are some, can't think of the right word, but some folks who use the curb-to-curb more often, that there's often calls unanswered. So the demand is more than the supply. And you're right, it is SCSA, so Ms. Lee was at the last meeting. I'm not sure if we talked about this then, but I think, I think this can be well utilized. I'm not getting the sense that this will negatively affect our transit, but, Mr. Dur?
Yeah, I think you pretty much covered most of it. It's been identified that there's still gaps in our, our transportation network, and this is being identified as an option to close some of those gaps.
Counselor Ray?
Sorry, and again, maybe if I'd have more time when I got home from work, but just wondering, because we're mentioned as a partner, are we also a funding partner in this, or is it a hundred percent covered by NDIS?
Uh, no, we won't be a funding partner.
Any other questions? Okay, motions on the floor, I believe. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. I think we're there. Very odd. It's not a record. We've done one faster. Without you, and you weren't talking at that one. Just a little cheap shot here at the end of a meeting. Until I'm tired, I'm taking cheap shots right at the end of the meeting. Okay, thanks, everyone. Good conversation. Thanks to staff for putting it together and supporting us. I think we're there. Counselor Bukama moves. Counselor Ray seconds. That's the motion to adjourn, by the way. All in favor? Any opposed? Thanks, everyone, and enjoy your evening.